All right, I think we have everybody on now. Um, if we can go just a real quick introductions around.
One second Angela, the feet's picking up here.
Okay.
Just two seconds.
All right, I think we have everybody on now. Um, if we can go just a real quick introductions around.
Angela, the feet's picking up here. In just two seconds.
All right, I think we have everybody on now. Um, if we can go just a real quick introductions around. Angela, the feet's picking up here in just two seconds. All right, I think we have everybody on now.
Hold on a second, we're having technical challenges. Alright, there we go. Alright.
Much better.
Much better, sorry, we were live screen back, backfilling microphones, you are, you are now good to go, my apologies.
Okay, you don't hear my like congested voice three times over. Um, well, welcome to everybody, we're going to go down around and do some quick introductions. Um, I'm just going to point to like the first person on my screen that I can see, um, Ruthie. Do you want to say your name and which school, uh, district you're representing?
Sure, uh, good morning, everyone, I'm Ruthie Knowles and I'm with Cherry Creek School District. I am under the weather today and so I'm off camera, but I'm glad to be here this morning with you all.
Uh, Anne.
Absolutely, I'm sorry I'm off camera because I'm playing mommy this morning. Um, so I am Anne Kiki Aurora Public Schools Board of Education, glad to be here.
Thanks, Anne Kimberly.
Good morning, everyone, Kimberly Sia, Denver Public Schools.
Uh, Becky.
Hi, good morning, Becky Myers, Douglas County School District.
And Brianna.
Hello, everyone, my name is Brianna Mestas and I'm representing the Public Education and Business Coalition, P E B C.
Um, Chad.
Chad Burns Remzel.
Julie.
Julie Stelzer Remzel.
And I'm Angela Christensen from Littleton Public Schools and Mike, you're our final, final participant.
Mike Ritchie, H Y A.
Perfect, um, I will call to order this special meeting, uh, February 12th of the Remzel Bosse's. Um, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Thank you, Becky, do I have a second? Second, thank you, Kimberly, um, all those in favor, if you can either raise your hand on camera or pop your little emoji up, that would be great. Thank you, um, we only have one action item, um, on our agenda today and that is the leadership profile. Um, that Mike and his team at H Y A, um, have compiled. Um, it was sent out to the board last week and so I, um, think you've all had time to review it. It will be, um, out to the public today, we'll get it to Chad and his team. Um, so Mike, I'll just turn it right over to you.
Sure, and before I do that, I just want to take like one minute and give you a real quick update. Um, so applications are coming in pretty strong right now and which is typical towards the end of the process. Um, there, we have, uh, right now, there are eleven that are completed. Uh, however, there are five that people have started and have not submitted, so you've got sixteen in there. And I can tell you, you're going to have a strong slate because, uh, I, I did a, a pre-speaker yesterday with a very, very strong candidate. Um, who's very excited and also I know there's two more coming yet that they've reached out to. Um, so the slate's going to be good, uh, which is good news. And then just as a reminder, I do present that slate on February twenty-third. I believe it's the same time as, as we are right now. And so then we'll kind of go through, uh, all the applications and talk about, uh, which ones you might be interested in interviewing. Interviews I said for the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of February. And then the day in the district has changed from the original schedule. Uh, because we were going to have some high school students that would not be present. We wanted everyone there, so the day in the district is the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and March first. And then the final interviews, I believe, we're going to be, um. Oh, and I don't have that date written down here, is it, remember what, what was the eleventh?
Eleven.
I think it was the eleventh, March eleventh, okay, so good, so there's your updated schedule. So as far as the leadership report, um, you know, first of all, I had a wonderful two days, um, in the district. Talked to a number of different people and we put this report together for a couple of reasons, so. It, it, the people who are real serious, the six people you interview, the finalist. The person who gets the job, this becomes a really important document for those individuals. And then the person who gets the job, it really becomes a great tool or a roadmap, um, you know, for, for that person. We look for those common themes. You know, some people get a little bit offended about the bullet points, but we do have a disclaimer in there. That these are opinions of the individuals and not necessarily, um, you know, what, what is going on, uh, at, at the school or district. But if we don't put that in there, people get very upset because. Why are you, why are you talking to us if you're not going to share our thoughts? So just want to make sure you know that, so we really pay attention to those common themes, so. As you go through the document, uh, you can see all the different groups that we've met with. Um, we had over two hundred people with everyone, um, yeah, great response on the survey. And then, as we get into, um, the strengths of Remzel. Uh, the community, uh, loud and clear, the sense of community, I think every group said the sense of community at Remzel is so strong. So you should be very proud of that and also I think every group mentioned that the teachers were dedicated and very passionate. Um, the strength again, according to the community focused on the exponential learning, the model itself. And then the size of the school was, was a strength, um, very nice manageable size, everyone knows everyone. Um, and then, um, again, from the community, the high school students just having that opportunity to do those internships. And if I understand it correctly, they can do a different internship every year, is that correct, Chad?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's awesome, that's really good. Um, the, um, challenges identified by the community. Staff turnover, uh, was, was a big one, um. The, are you at a point where you need to market and recruit? And I think that's, that came up in almost every group as well, and I think. My take on it is, you know, pre-COVID, uh, even before COVID. Um, you were able to attract students, COVID hits and people are a little leery maybe. And then it, it seems like the, the, uh, decline is at that high school level, so you're going to want to maybe. Look at what you can do to pick up and increase that high school, uh, enrollment. Uh, transportation was mentioned as an, an issue because it might deter some people from coming to Remzel. Uh, because of the lack of transportation or it would be impossible for parents, uh, to get them there. Um, communication came up and then, um. The other thing that came up was, and, and, and you might want to dive into this one, um, that, uh, it didn't. It didn't, there, there were a couple of comments about, it didn't feel welcoming when you walked into the building. So I'm not sure what they meant by that, but again, that's the reason why we put this together. So something you can kind of watch for and make note of as, as people come into the building. Um, the board, the strengths of the board, um, again, strength, uh, sense of community. Um, they, uh, big, good draw, the learning model, um. Great culture, passionate staff, great projects. Uh, the older students get to mentor, the younger students serve as role models, was, was a strength. Uh, challenges of the board, board turnover was, was mentioned and. It's easy to understand why, this is your second job, you've got, you've got a full-time job as well with, well, you've got three jobs, most of you. You've got your, your career and then you, you serve on a board for your home district. And then you have, uh, another board, so I really applaud what you're doing. Um, maybe look at diversity, how you can, uh, uh, include more diversity within the student population. Um, a, a, a concern or a question would be what are the, what's the financial picture going to look like down the road? Um, and then, how do we bring back that special sense of feeling that we once had? And then, um, what's the vision, what's the next level of innovation for, for Remzel? So those were the, the challenges mentioned by the boards, I'm not going to read through all the characteristics, you can look at those tables and those charts. Um, the staff, uh, again, the model, the delivery model, what, what the offer is really important, that's why people are there. Uh, though we are crew, not passengers, that was important to staff and students as well, that was mentioned. Um, staff, um, very concerned about the students, uh, again, coming with that small school feel, they get to know everyone. Um, and I, I wrote some comments down from the staff about the caring of the students. They, they said they noticed everything, so if a student's having a bad day, that's noticed and they, they talk to the students. Um, they said the students can't hide at Remzel because they see them all the time. Uh, versus a big, large district or building, uh, all the kids are all of our kids, so it doesn't matter what grade you teach, your kids are important. Um, and teachers would do anything to help students. And then I actually wrote this comment down too, because I thought it was very touching. Uh, every student in this building would jump in front of a bus for any student at Remzel, so that. Kind of sums everything up, how they feel about their, about their students. Um, and then again, the strengths would be the portfolios, um, and, and the student-led conferences. Uh, the curriculum, the autonomy that the, the teachers have, the lead way they get to, um, deliver their, their curriculum and their instruction. Concerns with the staff, again, you've got the turnover, teacher turnover, teacher workload. Um, about some of the decisions might be top-down and they would like more of a discussion. Um, uh, you know, about the decisions that are coming from the top. Um, the, the, this was hard to, so the. Some of the staff struggle with the performance model and it wasn't so much the model itself, they, they, they're okay with the model. They just wanted to know about, you know, is, can we have some type of a systemic evaluation process? Tied to rubrics and tied to benchmarks and I, I think that if you could come up with something like that tied to that model. I think that might help, um, with, with the staff. Technology needs came up and, to my understanding, very little technology is used i- in the school and that's done intentionally. Um, the staff did feel that, uh, maybe they need to change a little bit, again. Go back to fifteen years ago, maybe it was okay, but they feel some of the students are, are getting a little bit behind. Um, and they should use more technology in the classroom, especially for the older students. And then the Bosse's, um, the person's going to have to navigate that and that's. You, you know, again, when you've got different districts, a couple of districts dropping out, what's, what's that future going to look like navigating on the Bosse's? Um, students. And this is where you can get a lot of your information from when you listen to the students. So, um, uh, again, they really stress the community, um, big family, very welcome. Um, just a great place to be, great teachers. The crew is a strength, they'd actually like more crew, they, they would like more crew time. So I thought that was interesting, so it, it's only so many hours in a day, but, uh, they, they liked that, that crew time, they thought that was important. Uh, they feel very well prepared for the future, no matter what they go into, what field they go into, they like the internships. Um, the crew trips, they have a special bond, they, they like that, they liked not being dependent on a textbook. And I can go on and on about the students, how they just like the, the model, uh, that's why they're there, obviously. And then the other thing that I thought was really interesting, I wish every school would do this, so. Kudos to you, they dropped their cell phones at the door when they come in. And I thought they were going to complain about that when that came up, but they, they actually really like it. So they made comments like, we can talk to each other, we're not tied to our phone, um, it's, it's great and so. Don't ever change that, so that's, that's awesome, um, where they, they really, um. Accept that and, and, and that's the way of life at Remzel. Uh, challenges that they brought up, and I thought this was interesting, they said. It, it, it lost its sparkle and it needs a pick-me-up. And so that, they didn't mean it in a bad way, they just, they just meant that. Everything has been like the same and again, they, they talked about. When COVID hit, it seems like some of the expeditions, they weren't as rigorous or as long as they were in the past and they wanted. They wanted to get back to what they had in the past. Um, they, they actually mentioned about advertising, um, and trying to recruit, especially at the high school level. Um, concerned about funding, um, you know, some of the families maybe can't afford some of the, the fees or if they have to pay for the trip. And that might deter some students from getting there. Um, they really want music back, um, so I know there's probably budget thing and a teacher issue. Um, but they talked a lot about not having music and they really want to see music. They talked about declining enrollment at the high school. Um. They even mentioned about the, the teacher pay, so I'm not sure how they navigated that, but they talked about the teacher. The teachers are very, very dedicated, very passionate, they're asked to do a lot and probably don't make as much as other, uh, schools in the area. Um, and then they would like to see more diversity, uh, at well, a- as well at, at Remzel. So then we get down to, um, those, uh, executive director, um. The candidate profile, and again, I'm not going to read all those bullet points to you, so you can just see. We did break it down into that visionary leader with some bullet points. Um, the communicator, because communication was a big piece of this, things that they can do. Um, experience was a big thing, having that educational background was a big thing as well, the leadership, tied to leadership. And then, um, some of the things that will make them successful is in there. And then you can see, I did re- tried to record all of the, uh, comments that were made. And, and we did put in here, the interview, the interviews and focus groups of stakeholders generated the following response, careful attention. Has been made to accurately convey the message, the comments listed below emerged from statements made by stakeholders. And they are to be, they are to be considered personal opinions of the individuals making the comments regarding Remzel. So keep that in mind when you read through, read through those comments, but they did come up, so they're, they are recorded as well, so. That is the leadership profile report, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike, I know it was a lot of your time to spend, um, a couple of days at Remzel, but I appreciate you meeting with all the different groups and. Um, was it thirteen that you met with, eleven?
I think there are twelve, eleven, eleven focus groups or twelve focus groups and then all the individual board interviews.
Thank you.
And then a number of, a number of emails are included in this too, so staff did reach out by email. Especially some, and we offer that because some staff don't feel comfortable talking in front of other staff members. Um, so we offer them the email option as well.
That's great, thank you, um, yeah, we'll open it up for questions if the board has any questions about the report and what they read.
Becky. But I don't really have any questions, I just, when I read through the report, I guess I was. Surprised, but I think we're hearing this all around about the concern that kids have for teachers not getting paid enough. So, uh, I just, I thought, wow, you know, the, and our kids are knowledgeable also in Douglas County about what teachers are getting paid. The amount of work they're having to do and so, um. I guess I, with a good executive director and Chad, I think that I, I feel like you work. Right along behind with these teachers, it's just an overburdening as a former teacher knowing that this is a, a very hard job.
It is and that funding issue is a big deal and I think people know too. It's not ours about pay, it's about the culture, being happy what you do and I think, you know, one of the trade-offs is they're in a wonderful building, a wonderful spot, a great school. Um, so, but it's tough, they, you know, it's, it's, it's the, the cost of living is very expensive. The one comment I forgot to make, this is, we guys said Chad, they said Chad's an awesome math teacher, so. So kudos to, to, they, they like his math, his math teaching ability, then I found out you were a former math teacher, so, so that's good. But.
And I, just for commentary, I think that hopefully somebody doesn't end up in the same situation. Um, but I know we all in our districts took our H R teacher shortage survey. I've been teaching for eighteen weeks, uh, because we can't find staff and, you know, hopefully, you know, we can find good staff right now and somebody doesn't end up in that. Challenge, um, but it's a, a cornerstone of the leadership here is jumping in when. Uh, making sure kids get the, the right teacher, not just a teacher, so, uh, kind of another layer there.
Yep, good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board, uh, Dr. Kiki?
Thank you, um, in reading the report, it seemed like, um. The community wants another version of Chad. Did anybody, um, have that sense? Um, they listed the challenges and then they talked about what they wanted to see in a new ED. And I thought, wow, that's Chad, so why are we not keeping, I, I don't know. Uh, I just wanted to point that out and see if anybody else had a different sense. Um, and what, and, and, and as a hiring board, uh. What can we do to make sure that we don't? Give them another exact Chad, but a better version of Chad.
Chad, do you want? Go ahead.
Chad, do you want, I want to assure, and I know Dr. Kiki, you're new on the board, that, uh, the board is not kicking Chad out, that this was on your own doing and that you. That you are retiring, um, while we'd love to keep you, and then Mike, if you want to jump in and just kind of talk about what that might look like?
Me or Chad?
Either one of you.
Alright, so, the, again, that's why we, we sit down with the person and go through this. But even, um, the ones that apply, we'll, we'll talk to them about what was really important is, yeah, doing a lot of the stuff Chad is doing. Um, and that means going on some of those expeditions, being with the kids, being visible. Uh, stepping in, uh, getting, getting your hands dirty, wherever, wherever needed. Um, those are all repeated themes, so. We make it very clear to the person, um, especially the six that are being interviewed, uh, if there are six. Um, and then we even hit harder on the finalists about it and, and they, they, they will see that. The day they're there, that's why it's important, they all get a full day. Um, they'll be able to, you know, talk to many people, um, and, and just kind of be able to. Gauge and guide what, what, what needs to happen, so. Again, it's about the, it's about that right fit. You can't be a person that sits behind your desk and do this job.
Thank you, any other comments from the board? Or Julie or Chad, oh, go ahead, Brianna.
Yeah, I just was, I just wanted to clarify, um, about that, so. Um, when thinking about the timeline, I just want to clarify that there will be some. There will be overlap, there will be an onboarding process and there will be some training, correct? So Chad, you will have the opportunity to, to basically provide that on-ramp for the new. Um, the new hire, is that correct? And can you, can you perhaps talk a little bit about what you envision for that process?
Uh, sure, so I think once we get to that point, uh, we can build in capacity for. The new executive director, whether they're local or whether they're an out-of-state candidate, scheduling. Weekly, bi-weekly Zoom meetings, um, kind of keeping a, a running ledger of. What, what I would call the now and next, so things that we're going through in the present that will impact. Their, uh, onboarding and then things that they'll need to be prepared for July and August to have a successful start to the school year and. Um, the intent is. As much involvement or as little involvement is that individual would like to have, so as we're going through the process of. Uh, staff recommitments and interviewing, uh, if the new executive director wants to be taking a more, uh, proactive approach to that. Um, certainly welcome that opportunity for them to participate if they want to entrust in the team and. Associate directors here to be doing that, um, our, our approach is whatever they need to be successful and I just want them to feel like they're able to. Uh, take the leadership structures and the organization that's in place and, uh, make the decisions that they need to be successful. So then they might have a, a different vision of how their associate directors are structured and different responsibilities and. Uh, what their strengths are, so you know, my background was in adventure education a- along with public education and that might not be this person's. Uh, strength and they might want to pass that along to an associate director who does have a, a, a strength in adventure education and make them the primary lead. In, in that responsibility, so just, just want to be open, uh, to, to providing them the materials that they need. Um, getting, uh, things to them, uh, listening to their strategic design and. You know, being someone that, you know, just points out a few blind spots of, you know, have you thought about this, have you considered this? Uh, but certainly want them to come in and be able to build their culture and that was the intent of this process being a year-long. Uh, transition and allowing the board the opportunity to find the right candidate and, and, and giving us the, the best opportunity to succeed come August, so. Uh, I think there's, you know, a, a lot of system structures, uh, rituals, routines in place. Um, and this individual probably likely want to come in and, and spend a, a semester, um, kind of living those. Uh, system structures, experiences and we just want to make sure, you know, we're going to do early bird registration again, so they've got half their kids enrolled before they even. Start their position, we're going to have schedules built, calendars built, uh, you know, the board passed a, a single-year calendar, so in the event that this new leader wants to. Go back to multi-year calendaring, they can do so and it, and they may like, you know, a certain structure we have or they may have something else for consideration that they want to. Um, put their mark on, so it's, it's really been around, uh, set up for success and not have. Uh, barriers that they would have to undo, uh, over a long period of time if they so choose to.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that overview and just for your consideration on. How to share your wisdom and your experience while also, um, providing them room to. You know, to craft and, and act their vision, I really appreciate that.
Uh, Ruthie.
Yeah, just want to, uh, piggyback on that with, um. When looking at the, the crew right now, it looks like, is it four, um, people who are considered administrators? Um, Chad and Julian and the two directors and, and was curious within that and you somewhat answered it, Chad, of just. That there will be potentially the, um, flexibility of, of how that works and who does what. Um, and curious, you know, previously, um, when we were at Remzel, I believe like Kelsey was like a dedicated dean and it was, it was structured a little bit differently. And then at some point you decided to do the two directors, um, and I, I'm assuming then like discipline, things like that fall under them and. It's me, or, or, or how does that work right now as far as the, um, responsibilities within the administrative team?
Uh, so it's, the primary delineation right now is K through six and seven through twelve, so you have a dedicated administrator for. Elementary school and intermediate school and then you have a dedicated director to middle school and high school and then within those tiers. They each take on different responsibilities based on their specialty, so for example, our Director of Ele- Elementary Education also. Was a special education teacher, so she's our special education coordinator, works with ALPs, five oh fours, I Ps. And leads that team based on her expertise as a special educator and then. Uh, on the other side, athletics activities, uh, community events falls under Jesse and then if you think about evaluations, um. Their teacher evaluations, discipline, uh, weekly team meetings, uh. All the things that fall into that school level, they're that primary point of contact. And then leaving the executive director in that role to kind of be oversight and appeals, uh, for, for things like discipline, for example. In the event that a parent would, uh, feel like they needed additional voice between their school-level director and the Board of Education. Um, that's kind of the, the idea behind that structure and that structure I think will always evolve. Um, I think right now, based on the experience of the individuals in those positions, it's a strong structure. Um, but someone might want to go back to when, when Dr. Haddock was here as, as a dean and then we had. Uh, a Director of Curriculum and Instruction and then myself and, and we've, we've moved that around over time and being dynamic and it's more been a strengths-based leadership model of. Um, make sure you cater to the strengths of the person you have versus, uh, some fixed pillar, so, uh, right now. Uh, the structure is strong, uh. But at the same time, the, the, the new leader may, may want to, uh, make some adjustments to that and I appreciate the timeline that hopefully they're hired before April first and. That would give them the opportunity to communicate, um, the way that they would like their, their team structured. Um, and, uh, I would encourage them to, to work closely with, uh, Julie, um, because with. You know, my departure, it's a lot of institutional knowledge and, you know, uh, with her institutional knowledge, it's, it's really important for them to understand that and collaborate.
Thank you, and I'm curious from you and Mike, and I don't know if Julie has insight on this too, but. Um, you know, there's been, um, turnover, you know, with, with staff, um, that happens at times with Remzel. And I'm curious how staff is feeling now, if there is concern, if the people are like, I'm, we're in it, you know, we're dedicated. Or if there is feelings that people might be. Or if there is feelings that people might be moving on because you're moving on. Just wondering about the s- the stability overall of Remzel's staff right now.
So we we do staff recommitments uh starting next Friday through the next week. And that gives staff the opportunity to make the decision if they're returning or not. In the event that they elect to return and re-contract, they'll receive a three thousand dollar uh signing stipend for that, which has to be fulfilled through staying on a contract. Um, and and we do right now, it's it's uh similar to your experience here. Uh, Ruthie, um, you know, we have a, we have an inclination that there's going to be staff turnover, and we're looking at that staff turnover um through strategic lenses. And once again, the staff turnover is tied to transitioning from the field of education. We have no knowledge of individuals that are transitioning to one of your partner districts. Um, and so it's a, it's it there, it's the number, I think, is is reasonable to what it has been in past years. But I will also say your anchor core of crew leadership team, your veteran teachers, um, you know, that have been here seven plus years, I think they're all in. Um, and they're all in in this process. And I don't know that Mike got to kind of hear those voices of tearing when he, when he did his focus groups. But a lot of the individuals that are uh pillars of this community and that have been successful here have stayed. And the reasons that they stay, um, I I think the the core of the the Remzel veteran staff is is all in.
So I'll I'll comment on that in a second. But Chad, you do any kind of exit interview with staff when they leave?
So we do exit interview with with staff members, and it's it's really kind of a conversational, informal piece. And it's, it's, it's the, I think it ties back to the way you started this. It's about community. We're hearing this throughout the entire duration of the year. And it starts very early on. You know, we have staff that have come, you know, September and said, just so you know, my child's graduating. We're gonna be transitioning in this way. So it's, it's that open conversation here. Um, and then at times, there are ones that have been harder over the last decade, and those are ones that you really kind of dig into. And we've, we've had a few of those over the years where it's like, oof, we we really need to look at, you know, some institutional practice to to make sure we can get better. And we can pass that information along to the new executive director. And those are, those are things where you have to, you know, as a leader, put those into hierarchical boxes. If, you know, you have someone who's unpleased and and the model doesn't work for them and the type of instruction and the autonomy, and they're gonna transition to move into Kansas City, how does that fit into the decisions that you wanna continue making as a leader versus well, maybe that wasn't just the right fit. So um, we'll do that in service of of the new leader. And the new leader can participate in those if if they so choose to.
Yeah, I think the the staff is, I would say, a little nervous, a little apprehensive, which is common. It's typical when your leader need a change in 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 the leadership. It's very typical. They're very happy that they'll be able to meet the three finalists and participate in that meet and greet, you know? So they they like that a lot. And the other comment that they made was it's tough for that first-year teacher at Remzel, and it gets much easier if they make it through the first year. Um, and I think it's just with the expectations and i- if you're a, you got young kids, for example, and if you have to go on expeditions or if you're away for multiple days from your family, um, that can, that can be topic. So maybe they don't quite know what they're getting themselves into when they start, but they did make the comment, if after the first year, it gets much easier. So, take that for what it's worth.
Thank you. And I also just wanna echo from my experience, appreciating Chad, how you you do jump in and do really well at that. And um, I think it was Brian's last year, their uh crew trip that you jumped in on and uh had so much fun with you there. You wore your onesie, danced around like that little, I don't know what it is, that character onesie that you have. And the kids had a really good time with you, just in a very different role. Um, so you've always done a a great job of jumping in and filling in gaps as needed.
So I'm gonna have to jump off here. I've got another meeting scheduled. And then uh, you hop on a plane and head back out to Denver.
Right. Sounds good. Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, well, and then um for the board, um, I sent the report to Chad and Julie and Chris this morning. Um, so are we able to get that up on the website um in the next day or so? Um, that way the community can see that and um potential applicants can see that. And then if there's no other questions from the board, um, our next uh meeting will be on the twenty-third again at seven o'clock, probably about the same time length. Um, and we will get the uh finalists or semifinalist lists from Mike um at that time of who will be interviewing. So any other um questions or comments from the board? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Becky. All those in favor?
I.
Thank you. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.